Okay, this regular meeting of the Lou Ray Town Council will now come to order. Will you please stand and join me in a moment. Let's council with Sowers to be the center of our pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Dangell, will you please call it all?
Yes, Mayor Altmar.
Here.
Mr. Bickers.
Here.
Ms. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Okay, are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda? Hearing done, consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the five percent agenda. Minutes of earlier council meeting, nine eleven twenty twenty-three. Minutes of earlier work session, nine twenty-six twenty twenty-three. And accounts payable, total of one hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Okay, citizen comments? All right, you have any citizen comments? Looks like, um, just a general comment. Gale Cowal? Come up to the podium, please, Gale, and give us your, uh, we know your name and your address, please, if you don't mind.
Um, I'd like for John Winslow to speak first, if I could. I think he's on the comment list. I just, then I'll follow up with him if I could move my position there.
He's at the bottom, I don't know if we can do this. It's kind of a precedent.
Well, let's just, you know.
No, whatever, whatever, what are y'all wanting to do?
Okay, that's right.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's John Winslow, and thank you for giving me a few minutes here. I am joined by a number of my fellow pickleballers here today. And we're here just to, uh, we recognize that there are some works underway to expand pickleball services in the county and through La Ray, through the Dean Center. Um, and some money had been on the table. Apparently, that money has been pulled off the table, and the council is looking to see how they can get some money to, uh, to move things forward. But just to let you know that there is, from my experience, there is really some very enthusiastic growing interest in pickleball. Some of you may not even know what pickleball is, but it's the fastest-growing sport in the country. Uh, we started a pickleball page just a few months ago, and we're, we have close to a hundred members now. Uh, we're, there's only one court here, uh, in Lou Ray, the tennis court, that's also marked for pickleball. But, uh, we're just, you know, there are so many people that are getting out there on the courts. Uh, there are no bathroom facilities out there, so you have a, you know, a dozen-plus people out there for a couple hours with no bathroom facilities, and you've got a problem. You know, that there's a, you know, just in terms of the value of pickleball, there's the tourist, you know, the tourist aspect of it, the health aspect for, for individuals, the health of the community, uh, bringing money into the town, um, job opportunities with building pickleball courts and then maintaining increased property values, the youth engagement, there's the value in that, community coalition, and one of the things that we know, and I'm, uh, my background is in addictions and, uh, and offering recovery supports for communities, and one of the things that we know that for mental health and substance use problems, to have a sense of community, and this was something that can really add value to, to building community. Marketing and branding, uh, the health benefits. So, in conclusion, building pickleball courts in Lou Ray can have numerous economic advantages, including increased tourism, revenue, job creation, higher property values, and enhanced community well-being. These benefits can all contribute to the overall economic prosperity of our town here. And so, I yield any further time to, we've got a couple other folks that want to just add, maybe add a piece or two of that. Thank you very much for giving us your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Thank you. Okay, now we've got to do Mr. Merrigan, or Mayor Merrigan, or Gale Cowal, what did y'all decide?
I guess Mayor.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm just gonna add a little bit more to support, uh, the pickleball courts. Um, pretty much, I'm just gonna cover a little bit of the demographics, and I don't know, again, if anyone knows what pickleball courts are and pickleball sport is. Um, essentially, it's like a smaller version of tennis. Um, uh, anyway, that I've watched as well, uh, us go from a very small group of about six, eight players in town to over a hundred, people keep adding every week. Um, and, uh, we all kind of jam out on the one set of courts next to the neighbors over, uh, by the, um, little old, uh, school that's over there and the library. Uh, I don't know how much the neighbors are excited about us being out there, maybe a little early in the morning, but, um, I just think that it provides a little idea that we could maybe move that and maybe get a few other courts. Um, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America. Uh, it's between thirty-six and a half million and fifty million. It is the most popular sport, uh, in the South Atlantic region of the country. Um, in the last two years, it's grown thirty-nine point three percent. Um, and arguably, it's about fourteen point eight, um, a jump in this year from last year. So, um, there is just a huge jump in that. Um, in the last, in the last, uh, well, sorry, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, it's actually gone up a hundred and fifty-eight point six percent. Uh, the court players, uh, for every six men, there's four women that play the sport. The average age is about thirty-eight point one years of age, um, but you have a wide array of players. Uh, we've actually had people come to town asking about pickleball, and they've come out and played with us. Um, tournaments are off, they're off the hook, essentially, all over the country. Um, there's about ten thousand, uh, courts across the country, and, uh, there are multiple, um, tournaments that are popping up twice a year in a lot of these locations. So, I think it is a great opportunity, if we wanted to bring a little tournament here, it might bring some business on weekend that might be much more advantageous for us when we are less packed. You know, I was thinking maybe early spring, uh, maybe September as well. Um, let's see here, uh, hold on.
We need to ask you to kind of wrap up.
Okay, yep, sorry about that. Um, two out of three players, uh, play more than eight times a year, and, um, uh, thirty per, thirty-three percent of the court players are over sixty-five years of age. Um, I can continue to go on with a lot of different things about it, um, but in comparison to tennis courts, there's two hundred and seventy thousand tennis courts in the USA, there's forty-four thousand ninety-four pickleball courts as well. So, there's a little bit of a jump, but I think, just in conclusion to say, I remember when skiing was, you know, coming up and snowboarders started happening, people were like, "Oh, they're gonna start taking over our slopes," or whatever, but really, now they coexist together, and hopefully, that's what we can do as well in La Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Now Gale? I love the fact y'all brought the paddles, that's, uh...
We hope we can get some of the, um, folks sitting up here to join us sometimes. It's a great sport, and it's all ages. Um, I did a little research about, um, I looked at the bid that I believe you all put out last year, and, uh, I just kind of looked at the whole overall picture, and unfortunately, I couldn't find it again. I don't know what I did with it, but, um, I was shocked at the amount that was on there for, for pickleball construction, particularly at Ralph Dean Park. I've talked to the people out at the park, um, as to where the placement was going to be. I thought, sure, it was all that dirt they were bringing in to pack in. I said, "No, it's gonna be up by the, um, by some of the other facilities, near the restaurants, which would be nice." Um, anyway, so I've talked to other surrounding areas that have put in courts just recently, as to cost. Um, shocking, really, at the, at the difference. I've played on a couple of these courts, they're all good. Um, I went to Broadway, they just recently, these are all recent numbers, too. Um, they recently just, uh, put in courts. Um, I think they did, they did two slabs of, in four courts altogether. Um, and, uh, they averaged about forty thousand dollars for a double court. Um, Culpeper was another one that I spoke with. Uh, their, this is kind of funny, their bids range from a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. This was for, uh, four pickleball courts, including fencing around it. Um, and they also did them the size that would be, um, there's two different types you can buy. One's just recreational playing, um, if you use them for, if you ever got to the point where you're doing professional, um, type of playing and, and, and holding tournaments, you would probably want it to be a bit bigger. But it's, that's just given you with when you decide to run. It's not actually in the court, playing court itself. But anyway, the bids ran, in that particular instance, for those four courts, did not include lighting, and that's not what we would expect right now, anyway, uh, from a hundred ninety-two thousand and some change up to, uh, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So, um, you have to be careful about that, and I noticed ours was more in the three hundred thousand range, if I remember correctly. I also heard, um, that this KNC construction is the one who did the lowest bid, and I looked at those courts, they're beautiful, and that is their business of putting in tennis courts and pickleball courts. So, it's just not somebody that just goes out and throws concrete down and makes a court. And you can look at the courts we have here, and you see that it really does make a difference in knowing what you're doing. Those that already started cracking, I know that y'all did some work on them last year, but they already started cracking again. I don't know, I know they're all, one of the thirty or forty years old, probably, that are around.
Over than that.
About time they got a little bit of a better facelift, maybe. But we do appreciate, um, someone putting in the lines for that, that's great. But one court is just not enough here for the people that are playing. So, I invite all of y'all, come out, grab a paddle, we always have extra ones, and, uh, you know, put us on the map for pickleball here. Thank you.
All right, now, thank you. Right on time. Uh, any other, uh, citizen comments? Um, if you're here for a public hearing, hold your comments until we get to the actual public hearing. Anyone else here tonight want to speak on the, uh, pickleball?
Go pickleball!
Anybody else, no other public comments? Uh, Steve, we have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Lou Ray, any, any council, y'all have any questions related to the folks?
Yeah, you saw, yeah, Broadway did two forty thousand? Did you say, did Gale say that?
Broadway's, um, was about, they put benches in, they put lights in, there was a lot of other things, but it was less than forty thousand.
For two courts?
For, that's what they call a double court.
And they used that same contractor?
No. Oh, I think they did, I think maybe they did, yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, tell them, I mean, Kyle, first, I suppose, about that.
Cowal, okay. Maybe we can get Steve to call, uh, the town manager over at Broadway, give a little, a few more details, and maybe just come back with a quote for two and four, I mean, maybe from, see if they use the contractor. I don't know, on our bid that we did last year, while they pulled out pickleball courts, maybe a four on that master plan. But, I, I think putting two or four courts at Ralph, Ralph Dean, I mean, we haven't had a lot of concessions who've come in and asked for recreational, you know, we have the Greenway, of course, but first time by recollection, I have a group come in for specific, uh, you know, recreation activities, so I'm all behind it, and we can see what the cost. Maybe get two or four of the, uh, court. It wouldn't be what we talked about a few years ago, but I think, um, it sounds like it definitely could use, uh, so...
Another one we talked about before was, uh, I had a donor that wanted to get some courts, and we, we thought we'd get one basketball court, one tennis court, one pickleball court at Ralph Dean, and find out where the lines were, see what the usage might be. My wife and I, we go over to the, we tried, not one all year, but, uh, it seemed like it's all fun, and it blossomed into almost a million-dollar project. That's when we put the brakes on until we got Ralph Dean paid for, which is close, after the ball field's a concession. Kind of want to get out of debt before we go into debt.
So, so my family, we brought, we bought us a set of pickleball paddles and balls and all that, and we went out and played, and found pretty quickly that the wind, even there, adjacent to the library, could be, you know, it makes it difficult. So, we also, you know, kids, we take out the park, and it's windy as all get out of the Ralph Dean Park. So, is that a good place for it? Is that why they put fencing up, or they put fencing and they put the...
Just to catch the balls.
It's just to catch the balls? They don't put anything that's gonna be also wind-blocking, or is that gonna be...
Some places have put netting up, I mean, they put a wind block on the, around the, you know, particularly, they know the wind blows mostly from the east and west, or, yeah, in some of the places I play, they have done that. They've just put, uh, a type of barrier on the fence.
I would say up there, that would be an absolute necessity, if we proceeded with the project. Yeah, that, yeah, for those of you that may not have heard, been part of the conversation about a year ago now, with the, uh, just as Mr. Bickers said, it grew into more basketball courts, more tennis courts, more pickleball courts. It just got big. But, um, but we had had that same conversation of the concern with the wind at Ralph Dean Park. It's a beautiful park, the scenery, everything's gorgeous. I just know from having a son that played baseball all through the years, from Little League going up, uh, there was a lot of time spent at that field, and I can't recall a time being there that the wind wasn't blowing. It's just, it's, it's constant.
A wiffle ball, basically. I got your wiffle ball.
So, so anyway, as we say that, I don't, I'm not saying it to shut it down, it's not that, we just, I think the location, I think the idea or the concept of the pickleball is excellent, but Ralph Dean, even as pretty as that is, I'm not sure that it would be as enjoyable to those that really play our tournaments. And I'd done some reading on that when we were back at that point, and that was one of the biggest challenges that I found out, what literature and stuff I was reading about pickleball, as far as the complaint, is that the, the game is at a whole different level with wind, as far as...
Yeah.
Having to deal with that. And, you know, for the very skilled or whatever, maybe, you know, that might be to their advantage, but for the novice or whatever, it's, it's a big challenge with wind. I'm sorry, Gale, do you have...
Does the town own that piece of property that's in the lower part, uh, that goes all the way down to the creek? Like, if you're going into the...
The southeast end of the...
Right.
Ralph Dean.
It's very flat down there, it's a field.
And it's gonna go down with the sunflowers?
Sunflowers, yeah.
What, I mean, would they plant the sunflowers?
I think she's talking about the opposite end.
Opposite end.
Southeast corner.
And there, you know, tourists and stuff.
Actually, we have a site picked out, though, we see, uh...
But because of that, if you put it out in that flat area because of the way the trees are around it, I think it probably takes a lot of the wind up the sails, so to speak.
Yeah.
I thought about that. I, I walked down there, and I, I thought it belonged to the town. Someone probably just can't fault it, it's probably a lot back.
That would reduce the noise around the picnic area, it's all... All right, Lou Ray. Croquet. Man, I can recall when the, the old high school, the middle school, there was two tennis courts there.
Yep.
That was a nice central, central location in town. I don't know, maybe we could get the schools involved again, uh, and then a couple tennis courts that have pickleball on. That way, you could get lighting and, uh, just, oh, yeah.
Tennis is, uh, kids in high school may not play pickleball more than they play tennis, so...
It's the thing, if you could hit both needs, have a tennis team and also a pickleball club.
Sure.
With JMU, the, I cannot tell you how many tennis courts are there, it's a lot. But it's basically been converted into students, it's pickleball now instead of tennis, and, yeah, all along, please do.
And I definitely think, you know, what Mr. Vickers said, hence it, the right approach, which is sort of like partnership. I mean, the discussing we had with the donor ultimately did fall apart because there were different demands there. It's sort of what we thought our buy-in was gonna be, just slowly grew and grew, while they're in the, they're kind of shrunk and shrunk. But I mean, if there's partnering organizations, whether it's schools, I mean, I don't know, if you all would want to have, like, a fiscal role in a project like this, I mean, I think that's the way to do it, and it is a lot of fun. I've, I've played with Mr. Chu a couple times up there, and he's like the racket ball master. Any racket sports, so it's fun.
Just add one point, um, so, uh, we're playing out there pretty regularly, and what I notice is there are folks that come out there to play tennis, and of course, we're out there, and they just kind of drive off. I don't know where they're going, but, um, and of course, we did, we have that as well, we show up, and then sometimes tennis players. So, I just wonder how much that will work out for everyone. I mean, yes, it's cooperation, but, uh, I think that we're gonna definitely see a pretty active role of players in pickleball, because we, we're literally fielding three groups of four on a regular basis now, either in the morning or in the evening.
All day.
Yeah, and then, and then some, and then there are people playing in the middle of the day.
If you get on our La Ray Pickleball, you'll see people saying, "Meet me here this time," and like, all day long, it's...
It's quite active.
Join the group, La Ray Pickleball, Facebook group, you'll see a lot of activity on that.
Which will actually kind of halve the number of people that are inviting, because of the, the court time.
Probably give our spots away, I don't think we'll be over there.
You still have an opening.
Yeah, go ahead, my spot. Okay, anybody else, the council, anything else with, uh, anybody else with some citizen comments? All right, thank y'all for being here, we will, we've heard you, we've seen your paddles. We'll be looking into this in the very near future, and thank you for doing it.
Thank you so much.
That could've been a build threat.
Glad that bow scored us out. Okay. Phil, do you play pickleball?
No, I've never played, but I'm intrigued. I might teach y'all at the court tomorrow evening.
All right.
All right, Phil, nice to have you.
Good evening, good to be here, good to see everyone. So, I tried to make a few notes here, condense this, because I know we've got a lot to do tonight, but, the airport, as you know, I'm Secretary Treasurer of the Airport Authority, and back in June of two thousand nineteen, I called my lady, um, at the USDA, Cindy Leonard, I don't know if any of you all know Cindy, but, uh, she's a representative for this area, and I met her at the airport and told her I had four, four projects in mind, and the impetus for that, for me, was the fact the interest rates were so low. And with these sorts of projects, the USDA has some excellent financing, so that was the, uh, so in there, in order for everything to work that I wanted to do, I had to take advantage of the low interest rates. This was June of nineteen, and I told her I had four projects, I wanted to refinance the existing hangars that had about a million and a half dollars in debt, and that, they were a little over four percent at the time. Second project was the one to build eighteen new tee hangars. Third project was the terminal building, and fourth project was a fuel farm. Uh, I had rough numbers on all those things, and it took exactly, I don't know if any of you have ever dealt with the USDA or the Department of Government, but it took exactly three years to get this loan approved with the USDA. And it was almost like cart before the horse, because we didn't know exactly what things were gonna cost, but we got a rough amount of money, uh, and they made me jump through some hoops. The first thing I had to do was find some temporary financing for the old hangars, because she told me they would not refinance their own debt. So, got Bank of the James loaned me the million and a half dollars for the old hangars at interest only at one point nine nine percent, fixed for five years, so that was a good loan. So, that was, that was the first little box check. And then the USDA, in June of twenty-two, exactly three years after I met with Cindy, and lots of paperwork, uh, they approved our loan, uh, for four point three million dollars, fixed interest at two and a half percent for forty years. So, I got excellent financing. This was, this was, this loan got approved June of twenty-two, the next week, the Fed started increasing interest rates, so I got, got real lucky on that. So, the projects, and I'll run through them real quickly, the first project was the tee hangars. The bids came in on that, that project was two point nine million dollars, and I was able to secure, to secure a one million dollar grant, and I rounded these numbers to, so two point nine, one million dollar I got in grant money. So, that loan, that required an additional one point nine million dollars to build those eighteen units. Uh, before we broke ground for those tee hangars, and they, they are all, they're done at this point, before we broke ground, we had all eighteen units leased with one year's rent paid in advance, uh, and that project gives us, again, more capacity. We now are at forty-six spots for aircraft, uh, those hangars are full, uh, it gives us eighteen additional aircraft, burning fuel, paying taxes, so... Second project's the terminal building. Uh, uh, that project came in, um, way over what we thought it was gonna cost, uh, four point three million dollars. That was funded, uh, with a grant from the Department of Aviation for three point one million dollars, and the FAA, uh, gave us eight hundred thousand dollars. So, our net cost on that four point three million dollar terminal building is about four hundred thousand dollars. Now, that's worst-case scenario. Best-case scenario, I have with the bipartisan infrastructure law, we have entitlements that will come through, and again, it depends on how much Congress appropriates, but we could have three to four hundred thousand dollars available that we can use to offset that. So, that, I don't count those chickens before the hens, but that's, that's a possibility. Uh, the, uh, right now, if, if we don't get the, the additional BIL money coming up, right now, we have a loan balance, uh, the total loan is three point eight million dollars, and the monthly payment on that loan is twelve million, uh, twelve million, ooh, monthly payment's twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month, and I have, and that funds all of these projects. I have, uh, fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars coming in in rents from the, from the hangars, from all the hangar units. So, with, without any of the additional money from the FAA, I'm, I'm operating at about a twenty-three hundred dollar a month surplus on all these projects. Our fuel farm, if we decide to spend some of this federal money on our fuel farm, that, uh, the worst-case scenario on that, which we haven't done the planning on that yet, that would be like a three hundred thousand dollar project, and our cost would be about six or seven thousand dollars, so that's, you know, we probably aren't gonna build that right now. I've talked to DEQ and EPA, and they say we can just put those, we have two... we probably aren't gonna build that right now. I've talked to D E Q and EPA, and they say we can just put those, we have two twenty thousand gallon tanks and we can put those on gravel pad as long as we fill them from the airside because we have an old separator in the apron. So that's, that project's still up in the air. But, uh, we got very fortunate with our financing and we are gonna have, I, I sent some pictures for Steve to put up. This, our terminal building is, uh, uh, gonna be a good-looking structure. I mean, four point three million dollars, I've, I, for years, we, we talked about building the terminal building thirty-five years ago. And, and I thought two million was gonna be very opulent, but anyway, but, but it's, it's gonna be a beautiful structure. It's on a concrete slab. Uh, it's framed with steel. It's gonna have a metal roof, uh, pretty much indestructible. We've got a beautiful parking lot there. Uh, room for, uh, in the apron, we built the apron several years ago, so we have a nice apron all around the building. And it's gonna have a nice conference room and a big lobby and can be used for lots of, uh, lots of different things, so.
Airport manager office.
Yes, it does have a little office in there, yeah, so it's, we, uh, uh, we're very pleased with the, with the design. I hope you guys approve. We had a really talented architect who built a lot of buildings, a lot of terminal buildings for the state of Virginia. They were impressed with the, with the design, too.
As you're operating, having an old chicken coop for the last fifteen years.
Like, since, since nineteen sixty-nine, it's, uh, an old chicken barn, yeah. So, we're, we're looking forward, looking forward to having a, uh, a nice structure. And, uh, hope you guys get a chance to come out. They, they, I never knew they did this, but they, they built a, a, a little wall there and they're gonna put the, the finishes on it so you can see what it looks like prior to the construction. If you wanna pull in the parking lot there, have a look at that, so. But, uh, once again, we're, we're, we got for, very fortunate with our financing and we're, we're looking forward to. This building will probably be completed sometime in June of twenty-four. They got a ways to go. Parking lot is done. It just needs a finished coat of asphalt and then, of course, finish the building.
And so, you said that when this is up, uh, next year, your total debt on everything you see out there, back to that three.
Just about three point eight million now. Three million seven eighty-six, one ninety-six is, you know, and then, and our, the, the, the monthly debt service on that is about twelve-five. And our rent's coming in right now at fourteen-eight. Now, you guys know that there's, we got a little something called inflation. Uh, it's been, you know, people didn't know what inflation was for the last twenty years and we had low interest rates. So now we got a good low interest rate, fixed for forty years. And inflation will raise the rent on these hangars, you know, over that forty-year period. So, the, these things will continue. And there's a huge demand. I, I could build more hangars. If I had the space and the, and the money, we could build more hangars and rent them. We've got a long waiting list. There's, there's a lot of demand for those.
You are built out essentially, or you?
We, yeah, we, we really don't have any more room out there for tee hangars, so. So I, I think we're gonna, that's gonna have to be the next generations, perhaps.
Council, any questions?
Is there anything forecasting, wondering what your revenue's gonna be after all these improvements?
I, I got forecasts this deep that I have made for the USDA. And if you'd like to see those, it's, uh,
Maybe a little bit, some cherry picks.
Yeah, but we, we are, uh, uh, we, we hope, again, depends on fuel sales. That's the only way the airport makes money is fuel sales and now with hangar rents, of course. Uh, and, uh, looking ahead, you know, as inflation raises these hangar rents and as, as we have more aircraft and more sales. If you've been by the airport, there, there are two, two large buildings there side by side, then those, those buildings are occupied by Aircraft Maintenance Solutions and Elevate Electronics, which is Matt Queen has a, an avionics business there. And, uh, in the near future, Matt wants to put up another big building, like an eighty by hundred hangar for his business. Because his business has been doing very well. And they have like eight people working. How about, I got with me the senior Jimmy Culpeper, our airport manager, so say hi, Jimmy.
Hi, Jimmy.
They, uh, what are they, has he got about eight people working out there now, maybe?
Six to eight, yes.
Yeah, in, in the mechanic, between the mechanic and the avionics shop, so. It's a, it's a bustling little place and it's, uh, they're staying very busy.
Brinkley and Malpomo kids out, too, I believe, right?
Uh, yes. Matter of fact, Matt's been teaching a, a class at, uh, at Malpomo, I believe, at avionics, so. But, uh, we're pleased with how things are going and, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna see, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see how it goes out.
Do you have some questions over here, Stephanie, Ron?
Of the eighteen new tenants or, uh, new hangars that you brought along, are they all new tenants or was it some previous?
Yeah, eighteen, eighteen brand-new people that came from, I got one guy from England that rented a hangar. Uh, and, uh, so, yeah, they are. They're bringing in, there will be eighteen additional aircraft brought in and, uh, most of them have come in.
Most of them are there.
Yeah, they, we, we got them opened up, uh, right around the first of October, so it's just, but most of the tenants have moved, so.
Pal, I've been looking to the day when someone can give me a ride, fly into Luray and I come out and I see the building that says Welcome to Luray on the front of it. I think it'd be great if we started some kind of, get some designs that maybe even the town would get involved.
Yeah, well, as you see on the end of the building, there's, there's a sign there that says, uh,
Luray Caverns.
I think it's gonna say Luray Caverns Airport. I don't, I don't think we've got that, uh, casted stone yet, but, uh, I don't see a reason why we couldn't have a Welcome to Luray sign. The, the state, the state likes that, uh, what is our big sign? Say, Virginia's for Lovers or Welcome to Virginia or something, you know, so we, we can, we can certainly accommodate some of that.
Well, at least for the naysayers, I think the airport's frivolous, uh, it's the future. I think it's one of the best things we've got in this town that will help commerce. I think people still use it to come in and eat dinner somehow.
Yeah, no, we have a lot of, we have a lot of traffic. Uh, we have an automated system now that, that measures the traffic, uh, with airplanes that have ADS-B, which is really not required in this area. And so, I, I've been accumulating those operation, uh, that, that data. And, uh, we, we have a whole lot more operations than the, than the Fed had us, uh,
Just keep doing what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're enjoying it. It's been fun to do.
Council, anybody else?
Uh, it's, it's really nice to see the conference space in here. I mean, that's not something we have a, a ton of in Luray. And I'm sure you'll be keeping it plenty busy with some of the people that already rent space there. But I wonder if, you know, when it's less busy or there are times that are available, if you'd be open to, you know, different community groups making use of that.
Absolutely, yeah. It'd be a good place. They have plenty of parking and we'll have, uh, you know, we, we have a lot of people that come in now for, uh, businesses that come in for meetings and, and we need to take them to somewhere to meet and now, now they could use this spot, so. This will be available, so.
One thing, one other thing I'd like to add, too. When this building is complete, I would like to see more people come out. I want the airport to become a very friendly place. I would like to get the state DOAB involved. They've got programs for kids. And I think Luray and this county could benefit greatly from some of these. Want to come out to a chicken coop, you can press your fingers to the side.
Well, Pal, we thank you. We thank you for all you do. You're gonna travel around out there. It's, it's amazing. We'd love to thank you and Jimmy for your dedication.
We appreciate, appreciate you guys. You guys have been, I, I, I was telling Jimmy, uh, for, for thirty-some years that before we became an authority, I had to come here to get everything approved and, and you guys never told me that, so.
We've always followed through what you said you were gonna do.
Yeah, well, so far. But thank you. Come out and have a look at, come out and have a look. Uh, give the, the phone number, the, is the, just call the airport. There's always somebody there. They'll give you a little, if you wanna walk around, look at the hangars and, and certainly crawl in there and look at that terminal building. It's quite impressive what it really is. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, LBI, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so check your pockets. There's a sixty-one page document that I would like to review with you tonight. Just kidding. Just note it's fine. But I did this afternoon, received our final draft of the Transformation Strategies Workshop that we had. And so I will be forwarding that to you. Well, if you would like in a digital form, I'll also be getting those printed out and so that I can also give you a hard copy. Because it's quite a bit of information and I kinda skimmed through it a little bit this evening, but there's some really good stuff in there. So I'm anxious for it to be in your hands as well to review it. Um, trick or treat's coming along beautifully. We're getting calls every day of people that are coming to set up on our main street to hand out candy to the children. So it looks like we're gonna have a great event again this year. And a big thank you to Mr. White and to Mr. Vickers. Mr. Vickers for filling in for Mayor for our, um, Business Appreciation Dinner that we had, um, uh, on the twenty-eighth. It went very well. It was well-attended. People seemed to really have a really good time and it was just a great networking for our downtown business owners to kind of get together and people that had, or that are new to get to meet some of the old folks and that type of thing. So, other than that, that's all I got.
I apologize for not being there. I did have a conflict with another meeting.
Here, Mr. Vickers did an admirable job.
He did a wonderful job.
You know, with so many female business leaders, I was like blown away. Like one or two males and everyone else is female.
We're taking over, Ron. The hand that rocks the cradle rules the world. You know that, right?
Any question for Ms. Elliott? Thank you again.
Thanks, you guys.
All right, arise.
Other, I've talked to Steve. They're gonna do next.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
You're good.
All right, um, all right, we need a hand. Steve, you wanna take that?
Certainly. Uh, council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and consider the recommended code amendment to section five sixteen, accessory dwelling structures developed by the Planning Commission. The Page County Building Official has requested that the reference be changed, uh, from, uh, ADUs, uh, accessory dwelling units to accessory dwelling structures due to the fact that the building code defines an accessory dwelling unit as a dwelling unit in, stressed in, a two-family dwelling. Uh, and the commission did not desire to include basements or other spaces as a pri- in the primary dwelling unit for accessory use. Uh, the accessory dwelling structures are proposed to be allowed by special use permit in the business B one, low-density residential, low-density residential R one, medium-density residential R two, high-density residential R three, and high-density boomfield residential R four zoning districts. Chapters four oh one, uh, that two dot C, four oh two dot two dot F, four oh three dot two dot K, four oh four dot two dot P, and four oh six dot two dot Q shall be established or revised to include accessory dwelling structures as set forth in Article Five, Section five sixteen. Accessory dwelling structures must be existing detached structures constructed prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two in the low-density R one residential districts. Accessory dwelling structures shall not be used, used for short-term rentals. And the property owner must reside in either the primary residence or the accessory dwelling structure.
All right, I will open a public hearing. Uh, Ms. Jenna Smith, you signed up to speak?
Good evening. Good evening. Jenna Smith, one two nine Bixworth Ferry Road. Um, I have mentioned, or spoken on this before about how I'm in favor of this amendment, especially with allowing for, um, it just more options for affordable living for people to have, either if it's family or close friends. And it was discussed about you wouldn't have someone living, uh, in, in accessible dwelling unit that fits all the requirements next to your house. If it was some crazy person, you'd have someone you trusted. So it's gonna be, you know, making more affordable options for housing for people in the community, which we know is a, um, a high-requested item, which a lot of people, um, just really aren't big fans of. And I think a lot of people don't understand or know much about this, but I just, I'm just saying it'd be a great option, I guess I'll have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else here tonight want to speak on this? Burke, we have anything?
Yes, sir. We had a, an emailed, uh, comment from Jessica Zodig at one oh nine Reservoir Avenue. Uh, in regard to the code amendment, section five sixteen, I say no to this amendment. There is a housing and industry shortage in Luray. People who want to live and work in Luray as well as tourists, note shortages in lodging. These restrictions would make it harder to fill the gap in housing for locals and limit potential to expand housing for both locals and tourists. This hurting our local economy. Additional structures may be necessary for other businesses, business opportunities, but not related to housing, which I have considered. And it would not be possible if the new amendment is passed. This, excuse me, this amendment may well impact the second matter, uh, being discussed by the Planning Commission. Uh, if it is passed and the town council consider, continues to agree that the every child early learning center would be better housed elsewhere, it would be more difficult for the owner of this and other prospective businesses to create a structure to support their new small businesses. Along those lines, I do have concerns about the center being housed on Main Street. I agree with the parking and traffic flow concerns previously raised. We do want there to be ample parking so people can support other local businesses and Main Street must be easily passable. Following the last public hearing about it, the center held an open house. I was concerned when Ms. Smith publicized her open house with several pictures of undressed.
I think, I, I'm not gonna cut you off, but I'm gonna cut you off. I feel like this commentary, I mean, is this germane to the, um, I guess, accessory dwelling structures or?
I, I.
I don't think it.
It, it isn't, however, uh, I'll defer to the, the town attorney.
Well, I mean, what, I feel like it might be intended for the planning.
I, I would agree with you.
Okay.
Uh, it did appear that she did try to tie this back to the original comments about the, uh, code amendment for accessory dwelling structures. But if it was intended for a different body, then that might be a basis for, uh, for saving it for a later time.
Okay. That's the only comment that we received about this. Yes, sir.
Uh, anybody else here tonight want to comment, uh, on this, um, accessory dwelling? All right, hearing done. I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
I think it's a great idea. Um, I do have one thing on it that I would like to see changed, and that's related to the R one grandfather clause. Only structures that are pre-existing, um, like December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and prior are gonna be even considered for SUP in R one. I don't really see a, a rationale for a distinction there. I think it should be the same for any other zoning, um, area. Where I'm at, and, um, on the back end of the Springbrough subdivision, I drive by and there's plenty of houses that have larger lots. And they would, they would have plenty of rooms to put in the different shed in. Some have pre-existing, uh, some have just an empty backyard. I think we should just take that, that out and treat all the zones the same and have them come in here and present their case.
I agree. We're trying to make it as easy as possible, but that's a good question.
I, I believe that that was a carryover from the current code that it wanted to limit the ability to have, uh, these structures in the R one zoning district. Uh, I believe the intent was that, uh, the R one district is, I think it's specified in the, the, the definition of that district that it, it's solely intended for single families, uh, and not multiple families. I think the intent was to, to minimize the potential impact in the R one district.
So what if, um, what about someone with a double lot in R one? Well, there's plenty of those. If they met the minimum requirements for two R one lots, something like that, would that be?
They could just build another house.
They can, but it, but, you know, a lot of power businesses not like that.
I think it's a very minor change to take, to strike that. Um, I mean, my conflict with the, with states in R one, but I think the idea was of R one, it's the large lot and, uh, less density, but it's, because it's a large lot, that's, that makes it maybe even more ideal for it. So, uh, that was, like I said, Steve said that was a carryover. I've worked on this, talked about this since two thousand and six. We did adopt something in two thousand and eight, but I think it was so restrictive. Nobody was able to, well, it had to be the existing building. It wanted to be in certain places. No one's ever come forward, other than Jason, I believe. He was the only one who came forward to do it. So I don't think this is gonna solve every housing problem, but I think it could be a little niche that, uh, with family, friends, this, this, that, I mean, there are some opportunities there, uh, but really more than that, just publicize it so people know that this is an option. It's popular, you know, they, uh, it's a popular subject, but I don't think it's, we're gonna see a huge rush on ADUs in town. I mean, you still could probably build a proper one. If you were twenty-five hours, depending on, you know, two thousand buses. So I don't think it's something, but I do think it could be a good option for all your folks. See maybe five or six come for us next year or so, or twice, after hearing, could be a good thing, so.
And I, I think I would definitely support changing the R one language because, I mean, we wanna make it as easy as possible because it's a way to integrate needed housing that makes sense in a way that's not gonna, you know, be detrimental to neighborhoods. I mean, it's just.
I mean, it just, it makes a lot of sense and we have such a high need right now. The one thing that I would like to add to our approach is maybe, um, if there are proactive things we can do to make sure that property owners are really well informed that this change has occurred in case they might be interested in actually pursuing this. And I don't know if that looks like communicating with realtors through like fact sheets or communicating with local contractors who could then inform people that this is a possibility that you're probably gonna need a contractor to do this kind of work in some cases. Um, and of course, the usual, you know, getting something out in media and maybe even if there's properties that could really make a lot of sense, sending out some letters. I mean, just whatever tools are in our toolkit. I, I don't want to make a paper change, but I wanna do as much as we can to get people to embrace this and make use of it because of the need that is very real and exist.
I'm kinda, is this something so that I could build a cottage for my mother-in-law, for my properties? Is that the idea?
Well, you could just build it, bring it out to a, a, a new teacher in town. I mean, whatever, as long as it's not short-term.
You could do it short-term.
You could do it short-term. I could do a year lease or something like that. Right. Well, people have property and they have names to build something, but I think it's a good idea.
I'd just like to add, um, this guy's on the web said, I did one of these about eighteen years ago, maybe closer to twenty now. It was a lot more restrictive then, a lot more hoops to jump through. Um, but it worked out well and it was for my mother-in-law. And, um, so I see the benefits from it. I'd also like to mention that I'm also in favor of changing this wording to allow it in R1 and that we keep in mind that this is still by a special use request. So, simply because it's allowed if we get a request in R1, but there's neighbors that are opposed to it, um, and it is, it does state in our. I mean, as far as, uh, R1, single-family, well, you know, that is what's spelled out in our code as Mr. Burke said. But I think that, you know, if the lot's big enough and it doesn't impact, uh, neighbors or, you know, as far as anything negative, it's down for it too. So, special use permits still gives us that option. I've got, Mr. Van Ater, please.
Would that just impact five sixteen D or would that also impact, uh, one other thing?
I would, five sixteen D and then the first sentence of five sixteen J. I'm sorry, I. You, you.
B would just be, um.
D.
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 Yeah, yeah, D would be struck and I, uh, would remove, unless the ADS is proposed for an existing garage, that, that is specific.
Well, that's unrelated, isn't it, or is it not? I thought that was just pertaining to, it can't be in excess of fifty percent of the, that's talking about primary.
Yeah, that's, that's true. You might, yeah, I think John's right.
That's a different point. So, that's like, that's grandfathering in, it's just bigger, except AD, uh, ADSs.
Well, then we should, then I would suggest you remove the December thirty-one, twenty-two.
Well, that, that, well, that's.
And, and, and put in the date of, of the adoption. Because that, that December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two was specific to the R1 district. If what you're saying is that anything that's constructed going forward would have to meet it, but anything prior to the date of adoption, rather than.
Oh, just the adoption date.
Yes, sir, rather than the December thirty-one.
Change it to the today's date, yeah, that's on I.
Or just date of adoption.
Date of adoption, and then on D, just take out R, R1, just take that out.
Just take out D, yes, sir.
You can strike D altogether.
Yes.
Yeah.
Strike D altogether.
Yes. And then, uh.
To today's date.
Today's date.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
To strike D and I would be today's date.
After the date of adoption.
That's your date of adoption.
Please, you make the motion, you've been working on it for a year.
Yeah, fourteen sixteen. I make a motion to approve the accessory dwelling structure ordinance as presented. But strike D from the ordinance and then on item I, so D would just be reserved. We'll just call that reserved. And then on I, we'll make December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the date of adoption.
Second.
Any more discussion? Elliott?
Misses Lord?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider a code amendment to section fifty-eight dash five, loud, disturbing, and unreasonable noise. Following recent complaints about loud noises in neighborhoods, the town attorney has developed the attached amendments to provide our police department, uh, the ability to better respond to noise complaints. The proposed code, code amendment includes changing quiet hours to ten PM, from ten PM to six AM to ten PM to seven AM. Modifies the motor vehicle noise violation to a continuous or cumulative period of ten minutes in a one-hour period. Establishes a sporadic animal noise in the quiet hours as a violation. Exempts Virginia Department of Energy permitted facilities. Establishes a civil penalty for noise violations. Establishes four or more violations in a one-hundred-eighty-day period to qualify as a class one misdemeanor.
Okay, I open a public hearing on this. Uh, we have several people signed up to speak. Uh, Mr. Daryl Haley. I'm getting there.
Uh, first of all, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, I'm here to, I'm here to ask that you consider tabling your vote regarding, uh, noise, more specifically around music at the Daryl Haley Bed and Breakfast. Uh, we have sponsored live music to raise funds to assist and support the citizens in many programs of Page County. The citizens have included seniors to help with the payments of utility bills during the winter months in addition, uh, to our youth with educational savings bonds for college. Uh, programs to assist nurses with additional COVID supplies, law enforcement, special project needs, AMAS with equipment, et cetera. It's important to not impose a one-size-fits-all ordinance. Uh, in the, in the process, in the process, in the process, create unintended consequences. Given that many businesses rely on live entertainment, uh, this seems punitive. Many people are simply trying to serve and support the great citizens of Page County. Uh, through our live music, fortunately, we've been able to support a lot of programs in Page County, raising excessive amounts of revenue and bringing artists from the National Record in the Academy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Molly McWhorter?
Thank you, and hello, everyone. I'm Molly McWhorter and a lot of people in this room and many people in this county know me as a local musician, that I do that as my profession. Um, I've been in the public eye since I was fourteen and a half in this county when I first started a job in radio at WLCC WMXH one oh five point seven, WRA thirteen thirty AM FM radio. Uh, then I was my, uh, my Blu-ray High School band, I was a drum major for three years. Um, then I went to James Madison University and studied music, only to become a professional musician. Um, I have performed at assisted living facilities and memory care facilities. I've had a contract for seven years at Shenandoah National Park and their food and beverage performed for people all over the world. Um, and also, it, performing at local other venues and, and such as vineyards. Uh, and, uh, it's come to my attention, uh, that one of the local venues that I have performed at and get income from has, uh, been getting some noise complaints um, that would then be in a, I guess, a breach of the noise ordinance. Um, you know, West Main Market is a, is a great place and, uh, their Beer Garden is supplying, uh, opportunities for a lot of musicians around here. Um, and the police have had to come and ask them to turn, turn the noise down and, uh, that, the noise is a sound of any kind, however, I don't know anybody that considers music noise. Um, but I don't like the fact that, that my income is being jeopardized. I don't think you would want your incomes jeopardized. Um, and, you know, it's quite unfortunate that the ordinance here states, um, that the punishment for this is a class three misdemeanor. Uh, on the first offense, a class two misdemeanor. On the second offense, within the same year, twelve-month period. And a class one misdemeanor on the third offense in the same twelve-month period. Um, the tourists in our town, uh, absolutely love live music. Um, I feel this is a kind of a black or white issue, um, all or none. Um, there shouldn't really be exceptions for evenings on Main that go longer than the hours there at other venues and, um, that are quite honestly louder, uh, than, than, than venues such as West Main Market Alley and Beer Garden and Wine Garden. Um, it's, it's not, it's not right since the nineteen nineties that all live music that I've been a part of and that my friends have been a part of has been shut down, um, by our local police department and the county police. That's not quite fair. So, it's forced me to become a professional musician and make money at that. Um, again, I don't think anyone's income would want to be jeopardized. I don't think that that's fair for musicians to be jeopardized, uh, for their income and that this business might be subject to class three, class two, and class one misdemeanors. So, if we could also think about amending that. And, um, the part where it states musical instruments and radio noise permit at all times, maybe we could amend that because musical instruments, again, are not noise. Um, and the radios that they have in between the musical instruments and the performers, uh, that, that provides a nice ambiance for the tourists. It's not taxpayer-dollar funded, okay? That I really.
Go ahead, wrap up.
Okay, yeah, it's not taxpayer-dollar funded there. They pay for their musicians, you know, uh, grants or taxpayers pay for the Ruffner Plaza, the Performing Arts Claret, the Fourth of July fireworks, uh, events. And with all that music and the caverns music, it should be all or none. If they, if all of those musics are allowed and exempt, all the music should be allowed, um, as far as businesses are concerned. I'm a pri- a private business entity at this point, so.
Thank you for being there.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Mrs. Dale Price?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I also am confused about why this ordinance is in front of you based on a couple of phone calls, that's what I heard. I didn't see a copy of the complaint. I don't know what the complaint was about. I've enjoyed, I love music, I'm not a musician, you don't want to hear me sing, you don't want to hear me play. But the thing is, I do, I have gone to Ruffner Plaza and enjoyed myself a great deal. I have gone to Beer Gardens in town and I enjoy myself. The thing is that, um, tourism is, as, as we all know, is one of our primary industries. Tourism, I am sitting there and people coming through with their kids, they're sitting down, they're in an open environment. The kids can play, they can have their beer. And I'm thinking, why is this, what's going on with this? I mean, because I'm hearing it, I'm there. Um, I also hear my friend goes up the street with his landscaping business truck and he's making more noise than the guys who are on the, that are playing. Uh, I, I hear the guys going by in the bikes and they're making more noise than the musicians that are playing. So, my question is, is I looked at the material, I stopped by to get it. What is, um, noise that's prohibited at all times? Radios, televisions, musical instruments, and other similar devices. Hmm. Um, operating or permitting the operation in such a manner as to complainably audible across a residential property boundary. But in the town of Blu-ray, you have businesses immediately adjacent to residences. So, I'm not quite sure that that's clarifying language at all. As a matter of fact, I think that's confusing language. And so, I'm here to say that in your efforts to support the citizens who want to have a peaceful community, um, that, that you have to tell me, you have to show me how this isn't peaceful. And I don't see that in this ordinance. I see this as confusing issue as opposed to making it clear. The, um, the, I guess the primary principle for me is, where did this come from? And how do you resolve it? I'm not in your shoes, so I don't have that problem, but I would encourage you to think of the tourism industry that you do have. Uh, Mr. Haley's not the only one, uh, the Beer Garden's not the only one. A number of us are not tourists, we're here, we're supporting the local businesses, as you well know. Many of you have seen me outdoing just that everything. So, I want to help continue to do that. I'm not sure that this ordinance, I, I do appreciate that you, that it lists between ten AM and seven, ten PM and seven AM, whatever it is, ten PM and seven AM. As, as the times that we're looking at, I appreciate, that tells me somebody's thinking about trying to have a help. But I also encourage you to kind of sort of look at this sideways. This isn't quite what I think you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Is it inappropriate to attempt to offering clarifications now or should we wait till the council comments?
Uh, I'd be happy to, at, at the mayor's direction.
Well, I mean, like for us, if we wanted to make specific responses, like, 'cause I think there might be things we could do to add context to things halfway through the comments here. I think we might have three more or two more.
Yeah, and, and my, my recommendation would be to wait till you hear all the comments that are raised and then raise, raise those responses when discussing amongst yourselves.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mike Hasty?
Am I footsledding live yet? My foot's. Hi, uh, Mike Hasty, I live at, uh, Sixth Spring Street. Uh, I also play at the Beer Garden and, uh, and obviously, uh, it's part of my income, I'm retired, uh, living on social security and the Beer Garden, as a matter of fact, so. Uh, and, and I, I think, actually, I have a kind of unusual comment about it. Uh, I, I think there's actually is some, some legitimacy to, to the complaints about the, about the noise. 'Cause, uh, I, I had never heard myself, I can't really hear myself playing, but I, I, I went down, knowing that this was going on, I, I went down, uh, the block to listen. And, and it's not loud, but you can hear it. And when I was down there, I, I met a, a woman who, uh, was one of the complainers. And she was walking her dogs down there and we had, we had a really good talk about it. And, uh, and I could understand the fact, you know, that the music goes on all the time, you know, and, you know, and she talked about it, she could hear, you know, the, the joking and everything like that. And, and I, I actually think that's legitimate, but I don't think that, that the business should be shut down at all by, by any means. But I think there are ways to, uh, obey, uh, the sound. And I think there should be also some allowance in the ordinance for the fact that, that this is a tourist town and, and the business, we have tourists. I mean, we have people come back and see us day after day. Tourists that are visiting here, they'll come back, they'll come see us on Friday and then they'll come back and see us on Saturday. This music is helping and, and, and it's changing. Uh, this is becoming a music and arts community. I, I know that, I mean, I'm not a native, obviously, uh, but, uh, but I, I know from natives, I know people that have been here a long time, that things are kind of changing in this town. It's developing, it's getting a reputation. As a matter of fact, a friend of mine moved here from Asheville, North Carolina, which was, you know, known as a music and art, so she says, this is the new Asheville. So, I would hope that whatever, uh, changes you make in terms of this ordinance, that, that would make some kind of allowance for businesses and, and to give, uh, you know, like I said, I, I, that lady, I felt sorry for her. You know, because, yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the music. And I tried to go up and get my brother to turn the music down and he turned it down a little bit, but he could have turned it down half, you know, to half what it was, really. And, and I will encourage that to happen at the Beer Garden. But, but, but please do not shut down a, a really important, uh, venue, I think, for, it's really, it's, it's like rated, now I understand it's rated the number one restaurant when we were eight. You know, I mean, you know, you've got, it's got a lot going for it there, so. That's what I'm, I'm here to defend both sides in this, uh, but, but I think just to make it, you know, give some allowance, you know, for, for things to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Smith? Daryl, pop?
Yes. Uh, Jenna Smith, one two nine Bixworth Ferry Road. Um, I have lived in, uh, multiple towns that are tourist towns and, um, also, uh, the big balance is finding the things that appeal to both people who live here and appease and bring in tourists. And music is a big connector of people. Um, and I do think that the, the current code, the way it's written, due with the musical instruments, um, as in, as a specific, you know, exclusion there, um, I think it does a disservice because it does, um, kind of create an atmosphere where musicians and businesses who want musicians to come have this kind of balance where they're trying to find how they can fit in and do it legally and still appease both tourists and locals. Um, I, when it comes to like the quiet hours, I think that's great. I think that musical instruments and music and things like that shouldn't be aside. I think it should be matching the quiet hours as well. Um, obviously, within decibel, you know, um, levels that everything else is as well, but, um, I've walked through town, I've driven through town. I've never felt like the music was that, uh, like disturbing or volume-wise, it seems to be a, a good level for me. be a good level for me, where it could obviously gets louder as you get closer and it gets quieter as you drive away. And I think a lot of things that people are bringing up is when you live in Lou Ray, especially if you live on or just off of Main Street, there's businesses, like we've said, there's businesses and residences side by side. So when you're renting an apartment or you're buying a home in a community next to restaurants, next to businesses, there is that awareness that you should have that you're going to be exposed to noise from the business that's right next to you. So I don't think that in this sense that, again, musicians should be held to the same standard as other, they should be held to the same standard as traditional quiet hours when it comes to the noise ordinance.
Uh, Robert Smith.
I'm not a musician.
Oh, you're a singer.
Yeah, I'm with the West Main Market. Just wanted to state that, you know, our setup there at the Beer Garden is family oriented. You'd have a lot of, you know, young people, old people, lots of children. We try and provide music that is not, you know, hard rock type stuff. It's more mellow. And we'd like to work along with y'all and and keep our music and hopefully that we can work something out where my business and and the other businesses in town can continue to play music. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person that signed up. Does anyone else here tonight want to speak?
Sadly.
You come to the podium.
I'm Larry Merican. I live over on that in Garfield Avenue. Not in respects to the music venues or anything like that. But I have a neighbor who has been playing music all day and all night for three years. We've called the police on them multiple times, sometimes at three and four in the morning. Sometimes he won't even open the door. Sometimes he's given whatever warnings. I think he's possibly been charged. Other neighbors who live next to him constantly would like it to stop. So in respects to his drum and bass music, where his Sobwofer is probably pushing out at about five hundred watts, shaking our windows past eleven o'clock, we would really like that to stop. I've tried to, I guess passive aggressively mention it on Facebook to folks. But our business is there as well with our guest houses. So I think maybe some subtle differences in how we can help our music communities definitely continue to go. But to take these repeat offenders who just don't care about their neighbors would be really, really greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Do you have anything on this?
No, sir.
Kind of plugs the public here. Jason, did you want to kind of expand on what we're doing?
Yes, sir. Just just for clarification, the majority of what is in the packet is already currently part of the town code and has been a town ordinance that's been adopted for, in the present form, for, I think, a year and a half, maybe a couple of years. The amendments there before council tonight are limited to the amendment with respect to animal noise, expanding quiet hours from six AM to seven AM. Changing an exemption or a restriction with respect to motor vehicles operated during quiet hours. And then also changing the current ordinance, which only provides for criminal enforcement, to instead allow for a civil penalty that would be applied with the citation following first an oral warning and then could be followed with additional citations and civil penalties up until you get to the point of having a fourth or subsequent violation within a hundred day, eighty day period. That would be the measure at which the first criminal penalty could be pursued by the police department. Everything else is currently on the books and is not impacted by the amendments that are before council.
That's a part of your desk. Keep going.
Clam them up though.
But yeah, I mean, just to jump off of that, I mean, give you guys perspective. I think maybe it's like an unfortunate coincidence of timing. This was, these amendments right here were precipitated by a gentleman that had a rooster issue. It's been a perennial thing. So we looked at the that the animal issue. This is, you know, not related to the sort of excellent amenity that a lot of businesses produce in terms of music for the public. That's sort of a separate thing that's just going on right now. And I think people are working that out in, I guess, amicable way. And in fact, to speak on that civil penalty bit, this is actually an attempt to make it more friendly to musicians or people that might come and bow love the ordinance. Because previously, we just had a criminal penalty. You know, it really did go to that extreme point of the criminal penalty, the misdemeanor. By introducing, you know, the civil route, we can work this out in a way that makes sense to people and isn't, you know, criminalizing something that we love and that we all enjoy. So I just want to note that. And I also want to note, people have pointed to the musical instruments language in here. I have to refer to Jason on this, but, you know, you also look at the exceptions and you've got lawful public activities and events under those exceptions. And I would assume, depending on, you know, if something's permitted and things are worked out and communicated with the town, that a lot of those musical performances would actually fall under the exception. Again, I have to check with Jason on that. I don't know public just means government. But yeah, I mean, I, I just want to clarify that this isn't something where we're trying to be penal on anybody. I mean, this was precipitated by the rooster issue. A lot of this was in place previously. In fact, if you've ever had calls or experienced the police around this issue, it was under the existing ordinance that's, you know, been around in various versions for a really long time. And we're not adding to that or making that more penal at all. So I I just want to add that and maybe those clarifications are helpful. And I thank you all for your comments. And Mr. Merican, you can just, under the code that exists, you can pursue something with that neighbor. And that's just something.
We have been, yeah. I got you. It's just, you know, I think if you, if you checked out anywhere on the Main Street block between Garfield and where the Church of the Brethren is, you'll find most of the neighbors there are tying rapper.
And I'll also add, you know, all aspects of our code are basically complaint driven, which sounds bad, but it's just, it really takes somebody having a problem bringing it to us. We don't have people like going around and stuff. And that, again, is a way that our code is is not super penal, you know. I've got people across from my aunt's house, always playing the drums. Sometimes it's nice. I recognize Nirvana. It's great. And we don't say anything because we don't have an issue. But some people will have an issue. You got close together. I mean, so our code, I actually think, is is pretty progressive and works with people in a lot of ways. And we're not trying to change that or go in a penal direction. I just want to clarify.
Jason, I do have a question. For two D six, so the local parades, fireworks, plays, public activities and events. So in relation to businesses that do offer music or Mr. Haley's interest, his events, how does this apply?
Typically, my understanding is this has been applied with respect to the town before for governmental events or events that have some type of of town.
Or an approved special event permit that is issued for a non-town event. There there have, if if an individual comes to us and says, I'm having a wedding, I'm going to be playing music from this time to this time outdoors, we can issue a special event permit. And that that does qualify as 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 something that would be exempted from the noise ordinance. I think the, and I'll defer to the chief on this, I think with regard to the the Main Street business, I believe that the the primary complaint has been that it's not simply occasional events. It's multiple days, prolonged hours, at a, at an increased volume. And I think that the police have gone out there and talked with the individual musicians, attempting to to get them to reduce the volume so that that it can coexist, both the residential use and and the business. So and and that really is not part of the 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 code itself. But as as Councilman White indicated, we are trying to to react to a complaint, but trying to arrive at 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 some point where it's not, it 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 can work for both parties.
And just reiterating, so those like permitted, approved events, even if they're private, they're they're fine. And in your case, Mr. Haley, it's a real special word. You're the one, maybe I don't have the institutional knowledge, but I've never heard anybody have any bad thing bad to say about, you know, the music and under a complaint driven system. I mean, it would sound to me like you're you're in good shape. And and that's under the status quo. We're not changing that. Unless you have a neighbor that you think is going to complain.
I just want to stay in front of it, that's all. I really like the chief of police. I love him. I want to stay on that side. I want to stay on that side of it. So I want to stay in front of it, that's all.
I might add, I think more the more the point is, it's not the special that Mr. Haley has periodically. It's the continuous music that nothing towards, I'm all for, we spoke at West Main. I want them to continue as well. But it's the continuous, you know, two to three days a week, music that I think would have itself calm with the special event permit because either approve it or don't. So, you know what I'm saying, is they apply per permit every time they have applied music. We want to prove that. We're in the same situation we're in. So I think that's the issue we got to resolve is how we're going to go with them to continue with the music, but also keep the neighbors that's complaining happy, living in peace.
And I mean, that that solution probably just looks like continuing to work towards mitigation that works for everybody. I mean, and I, I know you mentioned some of the mellower music. I mean, acoustic.
I might add the victim that, or the victim. No, no, not.
You're used to saying.
Sorry. We criminalize. The complainant, husband worked at night. And she felt, she feels like they turned it up or got louder or they mocked her. So at the time that she may have had a conversation. So she feels like she's even become more targeted and more, that's how she feels. And I'm speaking on her behalf, is she was totally with them. She felt like after a conversation that it got worse. The crowd started singing along.
I mean, you know, there's there's walls, there's orientation speakers, they speak volume.
And the noise, or she'll say that she enjoys the music for a period, but all day for three hours or three hour period, or extent is what gets to the point where she gets to pick it up.
That's a typical venue musician time, three period, three hours or more.
No, no, I understand that. I'm with the guys. I just want you guys to come to some type of, I'm not, I agree, I get that.
I'd like to, I'd like to mention something. The, and for those in here that know me, I'm a musician as well and have played on Main Street in Lou Ray. Probably about a six year run of commencement in the Speed Easy, every Sunday night for years. Of course, that was indoors. But lots of times in the summertime, we'd be on the front porch. The band that I'm in now is similar to the band that I was there. We just played Friday night for a wedding rehearsal dinner in Rockinham County. We played on Sunday at a livery. We're booked all the way through into twenty twenty four. I do want to share this. Mr. Hasty, I appreciate your comments, but because I think you are absolutely on the right track. Where I'm going with this is, I appreciate the music. I don't want music to end. I love playing it. It is therapy for me. It is, it's a joy. And I hope it's a joy for the people that are listening. The group, I'm a drummer, okay?
That's how I was.
So we're talking here about noise, all right? I'm a drummer. We've got a trumpet. We've got a guitarist. We've got a bass player and a vocalist. Three of the city. So where I'm going with this is, the, and I spoke with the complainant that has the issues with music. And I think we've got to keep something in mind here is that mixing business and residence, okay? The volume, in my opinion, the volume has got to be controlled. We've got to work together on this, okay? If you're there playing, of course, you want your patrons, the customers, to be able to hear the music and enjoy it, okay? They may be able to hear the music and enjoy it and it still not be heard a block or two away, okay? We've got to be reasonable about this. In the last two weeks, I've pulled up and sat on the street. I was in the westbound lane, pulled against the curb, right? There was one singer, a guitar player. So it was just a man and his guitar and the PA system, okay? I'm sitting against the curb. It was just after dark. It was probably six thirty, I'm guessing somewhere around there. Don't have the date written down. I've done this on two different occasions. But from where I was sitting, there were, at that time of evening, there was, there was only like six people in the pavilion that were still eating or having a drink. Now, true, a couple of those people were sitting down near the sidewalk, I mean, as far as the tables closest to the street. The musician is all the way back at the tap shed at the beer shed, okay? Speaker pointing in this direction, speaker actually pointing in the direction of the complainant in this situation. Sitting in my vehicle with the windows down, it was, it's not what I would call loud, but it was much louder than what it needed to be to fill the space for who you're playing to. And I actually pulled out, went down on the next street over, and I could still hear every note, every vocal, you know, I mean, it was just, it was more than what it needed to be for the audience, okay? I'm going to go ahead and say that. I think the orientation of it, the fact that instead of the musician being in the middle of the group they're playing to, sort of middle of the pavilion, or even maybe more on the street side of the pavilion, I don't know if there's power out there, but the business owner may consider putting power or build some type of platform out near the street side that actually plays back through the pavilion towards the tap shed. But the way it's set up now, musicians are trying to push volume. I don't know what the length of the pavilion is, maybe sixty feet?
Forty by forty.
Forty feet? Okay. So they're trying to push it forty feet. What often happens with musicians, that if you're a professional, you need to take this into consideration, and I'm, I'm saying professional musicians do. When you're playing for an audience that's having their conversation and talk and everything else, if it becomes a competition that the musician's trying to play over top the speech, your audience gets louder because they're trying to communicate across the table. The musician gets louder and it becomes a war between the customers and the musicians on the sound level. So for my group, we keep it soft. We get the bookings that we get. And the venues have us back because their customers can still have a conversation, enjoy their food, enjoy their wine. If they want to hear us and they're really into music, they can sit at the tables that are closer. If they want to have a conversation or not, they can be a little further away, you know? The Friday night gig that I was at for the wedding rehearsal, we were outdoors. But we were on probably a sixty acre piece of land with our neighbor just a couple hundred feet away. So I also feel that for our residents of our county and respect to the musicians that are here and any of the others that play, I don't want to see the music die. I want to see us being able to work this out. But on the flip side, for anyone who lives in this town, whether they rent around their property, paying their taxes, at work and come home at the end of the workday, they want to relax and have peace in their home, and also our homes are cast or whatever, it shouldn't be an issue of having too much, too much, I mean, we're, it falls under the noise ordinance. I get what you're saying with the music. But I mean, if if it's not something that you want to hear, and you know, the other thing that I was saying about Mr. Hasty, to roll it up, and the other gentleman with the neighbor that was a different level, you know, when we talk about music, when we talk about instruments, if we try to tweak that code, you can have instruments and, yeah, for the professionals that know what they're doing, it could be fine. But for the novice that, just like I was with a drum set at, you know, twelve years old, you're comparing apples to oranges. It's not the same thing. And the neighbor that would have to live with me is twelve years old on a set of drums versus today. It's two different things. So we can hardly get a ordinance that fits every specific thing that that comes along. And we've got to trust our law enforcement to use good judgment. But anyway, I'd like to see us work together. I don't think that our residents should be, and you know, when we are talking about two, three nights a week, you know, let's be honest, folks, it's not like it's a one and done type thing. I live on the east end of town. I'll give you an example. The Page Valley Fair, okay? It happened. It happened for years, take the people on the relane and everything else. There's tractor pulls, there's concerts, those tractors pull into the midnight hour, okay? It is, I mean, blocks and blocks away here then, but it happens once a year. We don't get complaints on that, police aren't going out trying, you know, saying, hey, y'all got to park these tractors, you know, we've had so many complaints, or the demolition derby, or any of those type things, because it doesn't happen that often. And in a personal conversation with the lady that has a concern with the music, that she didn't have it, she even mentioned, it's true that, you know, dark wood manner, manner is cranking up, we're in the Halloween season right now, okay? That becomes quite a bit of activity there, there's noise, the parking in that neighborhood is swamped with people getting out, she's had people urinate in her yard, there's lots of things that happen, she's never made one complaint, because it's a month and it's done, or it's four weekends and it's done. So, I also weigh that as, okay, do we have somebody that's going to complain about everything, or do we have somebody that really is just been pushed to the limit of just can't get peace in their own house? So, and I think it's truly a person that just can't get peace in their own house, and I, I think we can solve it, and the music still be there, the business still, you know, do well, and, but, we've got to meet that middle ground, and I hope we can.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, we do have, we have residents on this side, residents on this side, they have a complaint, correct?
Is it, is it is a, whether they have or haven't?
Yeah.
Have a complaint, whether it's five years.
But I'm just saying.
I can't, I'm not going to say who's complaining, because I've just got retaliation, I don't want to.
Well, my.
You probably know the answer to that.
Yeah, well, my comment is, I know for a fact, they sit out and enjoy the music. So I'm thinking, like you said, we are, we are in the process of having like a stage built, it was supposed to be backed by the beer shed, but maybe it would be better if it was at the road, point this way.
Or if it was even in the center, and I know you're talking about table space, but if the music is that important, I'm just going to go, I mean, I'm not trying to be offensive in what I'm about to say, if the music is that important, then yes, you may lose a couple of tables in the center, but if you're able to keep it, because if the musicians are in the center, then keep it down, I mean, like I say, your patrons can hear and whatever, but I can tell you, I've had, we play a lot of wineries, and that type venue, we've had more people come up to us as a group, the musicians, and thank us for the volume that we're playing at, because they can have a conversation, enjoy their food and everything, like, wow, this is so many times we come, we can't even enjoy it. Or the owner, the owner of the event that we just played this past week, told us, he said, I'm getting, he has music every week at his venue, and he says, he's had confrontations before with the bands, he's paying them for a service, and has had to tell them, hey, I'm getting some complaints turned down, and they want to argue with the owner. So, your musicians, that's a challenge, because I know it changes, you have a variety, but I think as owners, it is your responsibility as an owner, if you've got a musician that is getting out of control, you need to step up and tell that person, hey, you've got to take this volume down, it's getting too loud.
He's going to be the volume.
So, you know, it is, it is a, it is a responsibility on your part, the musicians' part, you know, and everything else, and I think, and I hope that it could be resolved by that.
I think we can, I really truly think it's just the volume, we can make that work.
Let's move forward, we need to close the public hearing, you have one more quick comment?
Yeah, I'd say, in the center of the building, the musician would have their backs to some people, that's not, that's sort of the best idea, maybe at the road is a better idea, or stage where it's at and the sound volume, that's a little wise, but in the middle, I mean, that might not be the best idea.
I'm speaking in the middle of the structure, you can move it to the one side of the middle of the structure.
Where everyone is still staying.
See what I'm saying? Your back would be to the residents that behind you, back to the restaurant.
It's not even, it's not even that, this is wherever your speakers and wherever your P A's.
Yes, how you project, and it's volume.
We could get a decibel meter if it gets down to that level with complaints, I mean.
And at least in my experience, and I'm guessing I echo everyone else up here, the conversation from residences to staff to fellow councilmen and women, has always been, how can we fix this, not need to shut this down? I haven't even heard that, the first time I heard it was on Facebook, I saw something going, we don't want to charge people having things.
That's not what this is about.
That's not what this is about.
We want to work together.
Yeah, but when a neighbor has a complaint and they live there, and let's be honest, there's people living around your business that were there long before the business was there, or before the music started. So, you know, it's, it's not like they moved to beside a concert hall, or moved to a location where you know that's going to be happening, you know, so.
I bet we can fix it.
Yeah, I think we can fix it.
We're a little handbag.
We can preserve a good thing and do it in a way that, you know, we're living with all these other people with different purposes and feelings and things, I mean, I've heard from other people, like not just in the immediate vicinity, but I think can be worked out, truly, and if you guys make adjustments and work it out, and we keep hearing things, then it's not you guys, you know, I mean, but we can try our best to work it out, I truly trust you guys and appreciate you guys.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, council, because.
I'm thinking, this began in my mind when, before the rooster, when the guy had the truck, he was eyed on in the driveway, and the person couldn't get sleep. So F in here talks about, you know, a motor vehicle, so this ordinance has got a whole lot of stuff.
Anybody else? Who want to approve this tonight, or? You want to?
I would say, our noise ordinance, as we said, we're here changing hours tonight, adding an hour to the morning, which was due, as Mr. White said, as a response to an animal complaint. The music thing happened to fall with the same timing as this.
Built with the motor vehicle thing?
Yeah. This has been in place for years, and we've been able to work with it. Once again, there's not going to be a code that's going to be specific to every issue. Criminal law, same way on higher crimes, it's got to cover in a way, but we've got to use good judgment on how we enforce it, and how we fix things when they do come up.
And we're just, we're just adding an hour, we're adding animal noise, and then we're actually making the penalty nicer to people by doing the civil things, huh?
So, I think tonight, we should go ahead and go forward with this, it's not music specific, it never was intended to be, it was to deal with extending the morning hours on a rooster growing, an animal type issue.
It's not proactive.
Okay, all right, council? Do I want to make a motion?
Sure. Mayor, I would make one. I move the town council to approve and adopt the code amendment of section 58-5, allow disturbing injuries, where this is asked to take a decision on adoption.
Second. What is discussion?
I just listened and cut it, I forget your comments, and I think, again, it's important to you all to share that this was never the intent of our council, is not to stop or handle business, we support the business, and I think at the end of the day, you know, when you're permitted to do the business, we want you to do this here, but you can even back have to, be mindful of, feel the ordinances that are in place, and your, and your neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, more discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Hasty, I appreciate you.
Yes, no, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Daniel?
Mr. White? Mr. Pennitt?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, code amendment section 39-1.
Yes, sir, council has requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider a code amendment to section 30 of the town code related to commercial solicitation in the town. Town has received a number of complaints about commercial solicitations at residences. The code, current code only provides enforcement if a solicitor enters a property that has posted no solicitors. The town can consider a code amendment to require commercial solicitors to obtain a permit that includes a background investigation as provided by Virginia Code 15 dash, 15.2-913.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody sign up? Does anyone here want to speak on this matter? Do we have any communication on?
No, sir, but the town attorney is pointing out to me that the state code limits the fee that the town can charge for the solicitor permit to $20, so if, if council does consider a motion, if they would also include an amendment to 30-1 B C to a fee of $20 rather than $25.
All right. Nobody else wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion on this?
This one's polite, isn't it? The town council approved the code, and it's section 30-1, solicitation of residents as presented, with the addition of change in section B C to a fee of $20.
Discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pennitt?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Okay, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, council has requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and discuss a code amendment to chapter 74 of the town code to allow operation of golf carts on town streets with speed limits less than 25 miles per hour, once they have inspected, once they have been inspected by the town police department. Virginia Code 42 point, 46.2-916.2 and 46.2-916.3 established the requirements for authorizing golf carts on public roads. The online survey received 770 responses with 33.4% supporting, 7.4% supporting with concerns, and 59.2% against the allowing golf carts on town streets. Council can determine if all streets, and there's a few things that we would like council's input tonight, so that if council wants us to proceed with this, the town attorney can refine the code. Council can determine if all 25 mile an hour streets would be allowed, or if only select roads should be included. The concern for all streets is that some areas of the town are isolated by 35 mile an hour streets. Council has also requested to determine if all golf carts would be required to have headlights, taillights, and turn signals, or only comply, or only operate, only those operating at night. And there are a number of other localities in Virginia that have adopted similar code amendments that include Elton, Bridgewater, Grottos, Leesburg, Colonial Beach, Urbana, Buena Vista, Pecoson, Manassas, Bowling Green, Cape Charles, Clarksville, Goochon County, Essex County, James City County, New Kent County, and York County.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. David Price.
Good afternoon, council. Mr. Mayor, I've never called you Mr. Mayor before. It's always been Jerry.
It sounds really good.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I'm here on the golf cart issue. Heard a lot of complaints, I read all the comments on Facebook the other week, and there's a lot of negativity against this thing, but my recommendation to you, they make a golf cart that is street legal, it comes with a title, just like a motor vehicle, you insure it, you go to DMV, you get your slow-moving tag and put on it, and you can drive it tomorrow, to get you guys out of the hot seat, because everybody is complaining about the golf cart issue. If you just drop it, if you want a golf cart, go buy one of those carts, I have one, it will be on the road in spring, I'm not messing with it this winter. Jason has got a golf cart, and he says he's going to get him one. They look identical to a golf cart, but the thing with the golf cart, they run 12 to 13 miles an hour. These other carts are designed for 25 mile an hour streets. So I would say, coming down through town, if you got behind a regular golf cart, there's not places that you can just whip out and go around them and proceed on. It will be an issue. Now, I was at Colonial Beach two months ago, for the day, we rented one, very enjoyable afternoon down there, but Colonial Beach is laid out a little different than Luray. If we didn't have Main Street running directly through town, sort of, if any of y'all have been to Colonial Beach, I'm sure, you know, they got one little main drag, and that's, everything else is off to the side, but my recommendation is to shoot it down, if you want to drive a cart on the street, just go buy you one of these, down the grade, he's got one. Yeah, there's people going to say something about it, but it's got a Virginia issue tag on it, that's a slow-moving vehicle. Obama came up with this idea when he was in office, to get everybody into this electric car mode. So, my recommendation to you guys, so you're all not the bad apple, or bow, is say, you can drive one, just go buy you one with a title, pay the insurance, pay the tag fee, it's no inspection, you don't have to issue a sticker for it, you can haul it to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, and drive it, Har Harbor, Maine, wherever. Then you guys ain't got to cure the slack from it. That's my recommendation.
Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Thank you. An option I don't think we've considered, all right. Wendy Holzman?
I didn't know this.
Good evening, council, thank you for taking a few minutes to hear my comments. I want to start off and say, you know, hearing the results from the online surveys is a little disheartening, I kind of feel like not enough information was established in that original post that really allowed people to figure out what the town is trying to do. I mean, we had people on there commenting that the tax money was going to buy golf carts to rent out to tourists, I mean, it was just, it was an absolute mess. It's my understanding that what the town's trying to do is to allow individual owners who own street legal golf carts, the access to drive these carts on a 25 mile an hour less, or less, street here in the town. Honestly, we have one, we live up on Roster Drive, I drove my cute kid and a couple of friends down to the Fourth of July Festival at the Greenway, it's about two blocks away. It was perfect, we didn't have to fight for parking, you know, for events like that, it just, it ends up being a lot more, it's environmental friendly, our cart's electric, it would allow for the town to increase some revenue if you're going to require us to get these inspected, I'm sure there's a registration fee for these inspections, there's personal property tax, that's, that's a revenue source on these vehicles, and I, you know, I think, again, it was, it was very frustrating with the social media posts, that I don't think enough information was, was put out there to obtain a valid response from actual town citizens, or people commenting from counties away, and it was just, it was very frustrating on my part, just because I kind of understood what the town was trying to do on that, and I'm all for it, and I appreciate you guys making the effort to kind of make it happen, so, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you for being here, thank you. All right, anybody else here tonight want to speak on the golf cart issue?
I would have a question to ask, I'm all for it myself, I don't live in the town, but I do like it. Were there any considerations made for, she spoke of her cart being electric, were charging stations in the town, places for specific parking for these units? Those tend to obviously not be as tall as a car, not as visible, those type things, some of this is me playing catch-up.
Yeah, we really haven't gotten that far, I mean, to see, yeah, we'll have, those are details that will need to be worked out if we decide to go forward with them.
Yeah, I stayed in a place, I lived in one place for a good little time, where the street legal ones, as they're talking about, are around, and I don't see any difference in those in a car, quite frankly, I mean, if you go to the speed limit, you're just living along with everyone else, you know, you've got signals, you've got lights, you've got, just like being in a car.
Seagulls. And licensed drivers, which we can't say the same for mopeds.
Electric bikes, you know, I mean, you can get all, get into that too, I mean, it's, as long as they're keeping with traffic and not causing issues, I, I've never seen that that's a problem. I can imagine though, a regular golf cart would be a real problem, going miles an hour is a lot different from being a bike.
Yeah, I think we've all learned a lot, because I never really understood where it came from in the first place, so, you know, I didn't know we were going to have a.
Well, could you, my question is, if it's legal in the state to drive these?
Yeah, it says right here, I'm looking at the state code, and it says.
I don't know how you prohibit it.
It says limitations on golf carts, so it's allows it, but then it limits it, then it even talks about, every golf cart, utility vehicle, wherever operating on public, have a shell, display a slow-moving vehicle emblem, and conformity with, and then it talks about what it actually has to be.
I can, I can clarify that for you, there's a different code section, low-speed vehicles is different from a golf cart. The. The state has allowed, the code section you're looking at, has allowed towns, such as what we proposed, or what we're discussing here at LuRay, that if you own a golf cart, you can, if it has the lights or whatever we put in place, lights, or seat belts, all those things, and the state, this is a few of the minimum requirements, that a town can pass ordinance and allow that on the street. What Mr. Price was talking about, which is a low-speed vehicle, LSV, that's a whole different code section. And that is statewide, that, as he said, if you buy LSV, it looks just like a golf cart, it's a little bit faster. And if you go get a tag, you don't need the slow-moving vehicle, you don't need, well, we're gonna issue you, still need that on that. Uh, but you register it in any town in Virginia, you can drive that if it's thirty-five mile an hour or less street. So they're not even limited, the one ordinance says twenty-five or less, if it's a golf cart that's been modified to be street legal. If it's a low-speed vehicle, we can run on streets that are thirty-five or less. So, um, we're, we're talking about really two different things, if that helps clear that up.
But that's what Cal was talking about, was the, you know, the low, low speed, that's what he's talking about, it's like a compromise kind of...
Yes, and that, that's not, you just go to DMV, like, and as he said, the town has, you know...
You can get one tomorrow and drive it down Main Street.
Yeah.
So is there someone who wants to do this, Steve? Is this where it came from? Is there...
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that. I mean, I brought this up for us to discuss.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna clear the air with something here too. When in the work session, I just brought, I've been asked for two years as a council member to bring that up, from golf cart owners, different ones. Um, that, hey, you know, we do this where we're in another town, there's multiple towns even around us with Bridgewater and Elkin and Grottos and, and others. They're like, why can't LuRay have something like that? It'd be pretty cool. The people that are asking me are not looking at this as a mode of transportation. This is not gonna be their daily driver, or how they go about, it would be, um, just as Ms. Holzman said, yeah, it'd be great when there's music downtown or something like the Fourth of July, you know, you work your way around a few side streets, you get down there, you can even park in the grass, it's not competing with cars, taking up space, much easier to get out, in, get out. Those type of things, not a daily driver. And I thought we were just gonna discuss it and see what we're thinking. We put out a survey, which was not clear, just as Ms. Holzman said. It's even saying less than twenty-five mile per hour street. We don't have any streets that'll, well, we might have a couple that are less than twenty-five, I don't know. That confused people, people were thinking it's two-eleven, three-forty, everything else. And, um, I figured we'd have this mess.
The town was gonna run them out or something?
Yeah, so we've got this mess, and I think that, and I'm not blaming those that had negative comments. I, I think they had very little information to even go from of, of what this was really about or where it was headed. Uh, towns that haven't, um, I just spoke with a resident of Elkin and asked him about the golf carts up there. I think it had seven years, he said, or more, and he says you hardly see them. He says, it's, it's just a handful of them here and there. He says it's, it's one of those things that, when it first started, there might have been a few more carts than what it was, but, you know, than what it is today. But, um, it just seemed like a, a neat idea to have that ability for those that have those legal carts. These are not in the moped category. Uh, unfortunately, many of our people that are on mopeds, that is their source of transportation. And they have bought an item that was a two-hundred dollar moped that said it's end of life and trying to use that to get around town. And it is frustrating to get behind that. These carts we're speaking of are in the four or five thousand dollar and up range. The low-speed vehicles are in the eight thousand and up range, uh, for year one. So, I mean, these are vehicles that I don't think would be, and hopefully, I would think that the operators, licensed drivers, more adult operators, would, would be, I don't wanna put this, friendly enough or realize enough that, hey, if you were on Main Street, you, you get off to the side wherever you can, you let a car pass, you know, you don't hog the, the line and stay out there in the middle of the street. But, um, we've created this whirlwind of complaints and concerns, and once again, not blaming the public. I think we did not do a very good job of, of getting this word out. Here we are today. And, um, I, I realize you're one of the cart conversions, like I would be with my cart if I was to convert it. Uh, gotta say, Mr. Price's comment, I think he's probably more on, maybe more on track. And, um, and it's not even an issue that the town has to approve, because the state's already approved it. So the naysayers that have a problem can call their senators or congressmen on it, but, uh, uh, but the other thing too is, and I read every one of those comments too, and when we look at that, thank goodness our state law allows that you can ride a bicycle on the street, and as a pedestrian, you can cross the street, except because if we, and motorcycles are street legal. Because if as a town we were trying to pass an ordinance to allow bicycles or motorcycles on our street if they didn't exist before, our pedestrians could cross, we'd, I think we'd have a lot of negativity again, that, oh my goodness, you know, somebody's, you know, it's competing with a car. But anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet. Do we need to close the public?
I, no, I didn't, well, anyway, we didn't, uh, Mr. Mayor, we'll need to close this, but if you have one more quick comment rule.
I didn't mean to be a triple threat tonight, but I figured I'd add my two cents.
It's all right, it's all right. We don't get enough of this, really, for our citizens coming in.
So, uh, my wife and I both own electric bicycles. Um, my bicycle is what they call a class three electric bike, which goes up to twenty-eight miles an hour. Um, of course, some people in town look at it and say, what's this thing that looks kinda like a motorcycle on our, you know, on our Greenway, or whatever? And I, and I think that maybe there's some, be some nuance to it. When I'm out on the Greenway, I ride at ten, fifteen miles an hour tops, because I don't think any bicycle should be cruising around twenty-five miles an hour on our Greenway, for instance. But, um, and of course, um, I've had someone call the police on me saying there's a motorcycle on the Greenway. Um, but, uh, uh, of course, our fine police chief has actually clarified that it wasn't a motorcycle. Um, so I guess in respects to the golf carts, I think it's a great idea, and here's why. Um, we hit five dollars for gas not too long ago, I think we have that possibility again. And, um, my wife and I bought those electric bikes to hook a little trailer, so we can go up to the grocery store, you know, for instance, and save a little bit of money here and there. So if that's going to give us the ability to hedge possibly in the future, I think we should consider this. I mean, anything where we can ease the town from saying putting up some huge garage for more parking, or, you know, making it so people can't, you know, save a few dollars kicking it around town. Um, I don't think it means that we are allowing the town to become into full mayhem because we have crazy golf cart riders around and, um, but I have seen the comments, and I think they're kind of interesting. And, um, maybe there is, um, some commercial interest there in different ways, I don't know. Um, but I think for local people who want that, I don't think it's gonna really hurt anything.
All right, just thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will close the public hearing, counsel?
Yeah, I, I actually responded to somebody today who wrote a really nice email, where the quality of discourse in the email was much higher than the media comment. Um, and I responded with essentially the position that Mr. Price outlined, which I think is really a, a great approach. I, I told them about the low-speed vehicles, I mean, we talked after the last meeting, that those are already, as we've discussed, totally allowed. You can have one tomorrow driving down Main Street. I think that's the way to go, because I, I think adopting the ordinance for conversion would be a place where, you know, the town is getting into an additional regulatory role, and the town is getting into an additional permitting role, staff's doing that. And again, it's, it's, we've discussed even the case of Elkin, we got the chance to talk to Elkin's mayor, uh, this past weekend. And the uptake is low, and as you've said at previous meetings, I mean, even the conversions are very costly. So I, I think it's probably wise to just steer people in the low-speed vehicle direction instead of taking on this new role for local government. But that's my position.
Well, I, I disagree now. I don't see much wrong with people that own a golf cart to have a chance to use tomorrow. Uh, I wouldn't like to table it or not take any action with this, so, the last, when the survey went out, that caused a bug, we made news. Uh, now that we've had this discussion, gives people more chance to know more and think more. Maybe we can have a better, uh, worded option before we take any action. I'd say we just leave it on that.
I think this was a good, uh, learning opportunity for us, see, surveys, I think, give the false impression of, of voting mechanism almost.
Yes.
For one, where it's, I'll open to citizens and non-citizens, just anybody that, you know, everybody likes to get on there and just...
Someone said the auto, someone said the auto survey allowed anyone from China to Stanley devote.
It did, it did, right here. And I think a really great, a really great use case for, for something like Facebook is to really give clarity to the situation. Give some real detailed information to people, whether it's in bite-sized chunks or in long form. You know, it's the same with the round the bell. I ended up writing a, a post that I ended up posting, or posting on all of the, all a bunch of different people's posts because it was like so many misconceptions about this.
Yes.
So we put out this brief, and then people think the town of LuRay is gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy a fleet of golf carts. And, and, and it's, and for some reason, it's gonna add more drivers to the roads, which I don't know where the people are coming from, because they would've already had a car, and if some, for some reason, they take up more parking spots with cars. So it's just all these misconceptions, and we could've just, instead we could've been, did you know golf carts take forty percent of the footprint in the parking spots? They reduce emissions, they're friendly to tourists, if you live in the boom field, you can just mosey on over to Ralph Dean and, you know, some of those types of things, where we could've provided some good information of the value of it. And we could've also, like I said, some of the potential downfalls of this. So, some of those, and create a dialogue that then takes place in here. Right, I think this is the place, or in a town hall, that's where people can give their, if they wanna rage from the podium over here, go ask. But, but on Facebook, it's just, what, now, now there's a misconception now, right? This is a whole other thing that doesn't even exist that people think exists, because of just talk coming, took the life of the town.
I think the best use case for Facebook is for any person or entity is to just run the heck away from Facebook. Because it's terrible.
Perhaps.
There's no nuance of Facebook.
Yeah, but, but here's the thing, as a town, we asked for comments. You know, I mean, and right, I mean, here's the thing that we're learning. I mean, be prepared for what that's gonna be, which we know. I'd like to see us do a survey next time we propose to raise taxes. Let's put a survey out and say, how do you feel about raising taxes? I know the results are...
I think there's an issue in asking for their feedback, and that puts off, I think it's a matter of providing the right, the facts, right? We need to, we can control the narrative a little bit better, right? And let, let's make sure that they are equipped and educated on the matters before us, before we just randomly put out a very, um, generic yes or no check box without the details, because then, how valuable is the input, right?
Right. And that they're from LuRay. Because I mean, I, I think, we had discussed in this weekend, I think, you know, if we didn't have all the commenters that weren't LuRayers, which yours accepting, because it was very positive, um, that would be like ninety percent of our negative comments on things. I mean, it really, we'd get a lot of people just starting. And, and our, we, we represent constituents of LuRay, which is like, all those five thousand people, like, those are people that matter. I mean, God bless everybody else, but I don't care, you know, honestly.
And frankly, you have to ask if they pay a water bill, because I talked to a lot of people that...
That's right, a couple outside.
That think that they're in, you know, corporate limit LuRay citizens and...
They're pushing, they're pushing for this.
Well, no, I didn't push on my ballot. Yeah.
So like I said, that's a set on for a month.
I agree, let's, I appreciate the show of support that was, that's here tonight, and the comments that, uh, we received. And I think the weight does need to be placed in those that take the time to, to show up here, whether they're against or for, whatever the issue may be. Um, and as you said, many of you said, I think this is, was a good learning experience here as far as for the town. Uh, you pushed a ton out of your evening here this evening, but it's not falling on deaf ears, and I agree with Mr. Pickers. I think we, uh, we do some more homework on this, do some more research, and, uh, more with the pros and cons. I'll tell you, I'm gonna reach out to more of these towns that, and I appreciate Mr. Burke finding many of these towns in Virginia that I was aware had them. And I'm gonna reach out to them and get some comments on the do's and don'ts, and, uh, you can learn a lot from towns that already have something in place, you know, as a town, but, which is not a hot button, but, just like with the pool and stuff like that, you know? Heard from many towns that had pools that were like, oh my gosh, you know, we'd have never done that. You know, we'd like to try to get out. So anyway, uh, and you've gotta put, put weight in those comments from jurisdictions and stuff that are experienced or tried. So we'll do some homework.
All right, are you making a motion to table?
Yeah, I moved that we tabled the issue.
We want the work session or the next round?
We're waiting time.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have a rest of the evening visiting this by Springau or something. You know, I mean, we're going through the winter months now, that's the other thing that no one considers a fault. These, these vehicles, these carts wouldn't be allowed on the road, and as you get into November, December, January, February, you know, it's, it's just summertime stuff. And, and I think the users would be, just as you say, just a couple block hop at a time or whatever, not transportation, so.
I don't mind Steve puts it on the working session, I just don't think we have to be delegating, we have to do it now.
No, there's no...
How much more I will learn, or how much more I'll get here?
Well, I, I, again, for, for the benefit of, of the town attorney, the, the, the two questions that would help so that we could refine the code, uh, and when we present it to y'all or the public in the future, would be, uh, does counsel have a concern, or have, have a, a direction as far as, do you want the code to reflect all twenty-five mile an hour streets? Or do you want it to be a, uh, an approved list that counsel adopts?
Steve, I wanted a map of what all the twenty-five mile per hour streets are, so I can kinda visualize. I think some people visualize, you know, I know I can't go to Walmart, but I get to the hospital.
Well, technically, you could get to Walmart if we were able to cross two-eleven on...
Jump Cave Hill.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you do the ones that Alton was talking about, that's not an issue, is it?
No, that wouldn't be an issue, and Mr. Burke brings up a good point. There's, there's some other things I've thought about since we first discussed this. If you take like Springview subdivision, okay? Springview, the community itself is twenty-five mile per hour up in the neighborhood. But if you have that, this, one of these carts, a golf cart, modified golf cart in Springview, you can't come down Wallace Avenue and get into town because you're on thirty-five mile an hour street with Main Street until you get up into, uh, Anderson Street. So there's some isolated neighborhoods.
I was gonna bring that up for you, I'm...
Could run, and that happens, uh, on the west end of town, so that you have everything in town. It, that, it becomes somewhat isolated from downtown. Now, nothing would stop them from putting their cart on a trail and bringing it downtown. But I, but I know that if I lived in one of those neighborhoods that's separated, I'd be like, wow, they passed something, but I really can't enjoy it unless I just run around my own block, you know, my own neighborhood. So that is something, you know, that I think we need to visit. Uh, the LSV issue, if you had one of those, you can run on thirty-five mile an hour street. So that takes care of some of our challenges with the town being as spread out as it is in the different mile per hour zones, our different sections being split by thirty-five.
Yeah, with the low-speed vehicle, I mean, the state is, the regulator, the state is the one saying safety guidelines and mechanical guidelines about, we don't have to take on that whole of having you guys spend time on, which, I mean, thank you. But maybe you don't want, I mean...
I, I thought about that too, like, I know we have something about it, it's required to have a governor, but what about a minimum speed capability? Is that something that can be?
There's, there...
I know we don't currently have that, but if it's going...
Governor part is on the gas cart, not electric cart.
Well, sure, but, but I'm just saying, like, if it's, what about a minimum speed? If something's put it on the road five miles an hour and that's all it's capable of?
Technically, if you had your old Model T, you can chug up and down our streets at five miles an hour.
That's true. And that's a good point, as we think about this, there's, there's a lot of things that are already street legal. It can be on our streets that are more impeding than this golf cart.
We cannot, we shouldn't ride it.
I can get on my nine-end tractor and ride up down through town all day long.
Yes, sir.
It's, so, you know, that's one of the things, I will say, and I know where you're probably going next, Steve, the, uh, the idea of the lights and equipment. Personally, I think if we get to this point where we're allowing golf carts that are modified, I think every cart should have the headlights, taillights, turn signals, or whatever, because I don't wanna see us getting into an issue that we've got a cart that does not have headlights or taillights, and it's still legal, and maybe the person is a law-abiding citizen, but you get in an event or something, dark fall comes, nighttime comes, and like, well, I think I can make it home, you know? And then someone's trying to, to get back, and they don't have the proper lights or whatever. I think we get to this point, if we, if we get there, that all carts should have the lights.
Well, and to be honest with you, it's been thirty-plus years since I took my driver's test. I don't know if they still teach the hand signals.
They probably do. Like the bicycles, you have to.
Yeah, yeah. Really is, they always have that.
That, that would be the, you know, during the daytime, but, you know, not many people know, oh, what are you, you know, hi!
Lon, did you have a motion? Did you wanna table, or you wanna go, wanna work on this a little more?
I moved, leave it alone for the near future, as I said. I moved that we table this issue for... this issue for the next meeting. Is that better? Move my second.
Second again.
We'll get more in.
Any discussion?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. All right, move on.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to approve and authorize funding of thirteen thousand dollars from fund reserves for the acquisition of a quarter acre parcel, tax map number forty-two A ten A three on Caroline Drive for enhanced access to the town's West Main Street water tank.
All right. Well, if anybody doesn't know, this is a property right next to the water tank that we can really use to put new water on. And we need them. And oxygen, we thought it might go for twenty thousand, we got them for thirteen thousand. I'm going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move the town council approve and authorize use of thirteen thousand dollars from the fund reserve for the acquisition of the point two four nine acre parcel, tax map number forty-two A ten dash A dash three on Caroline Drive as presented. I further move the town council authorize the town manager, town treasurer, and the town attorney to execute all documents and agreements necessary to close the purchase of the property. I move that the town council approve and authorize the town treasurer to make the corresponding budget adjustment.
Second. All right, discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Towers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Pickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to approve and authorize the use of two hundred twenty thousand dollars from fund reserves for the acquisition of the half acre parcel at one twenty-one North Hawksville Street, tax map number forty-two A four dash A dash forty-two. Property will be used for our Public Works Department. The town attorney has drafted the contract for purchase and the sale of real estate.
Well, again, I think this is a great purchase, positive location. Our parks, our public works people are overwhelmed with the putting and storing space. They can definitely use that pop bay garage as the old Luray auto body, it's one of our business. I'd like to take a motion. Move the town council approve and authorize use of two hundred twenty thousand dollars from the fund reserves for the acquisition of twenty-five acre parcel at one twenty-one North Hawksville Street, tax map number forty-two A four dash A dash forty-two as presented. I further move the town council authorize the town manager, the town treasurer, the town attorney to execute all documents and agreements necessary to close the purchase of the property. I further move the town council approve and authorize the town treasurer to make the corresponding budget adjustment.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Towers?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson, you have anything for us this evening?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, council, any comments?
Just to follow up on the pickleball courts, if it would be possible for us, just to talk the broadway, just to follow up, just to get an idea of what the court calls and we'll bring that back to us next month.
Actually, as soon as I find it out.
Oh, yeah, just let us know.
I'm interested in the other site besides Ralph Dean. Have you thought about that? Site town?
Ryan, that's come up. The thing with Ralph Dean, we have water, we have bathrooms, we have parking.
That's why
We've got somewhere else. We've got to start all over.
Okay. Thank you.
I think if you put, yeah, windscreen trees.
See, that conflicts with the, with the park because you don't want a lot of tree coverage when there were those kids. So that's
Included, yeah.
But anyways, that's
You had the opportunity to go to Harrisonburg Morrison Park. They took two sports stadium and converted them into four pickleball courts. And the wind is also an issue. They're not played over there quite a bit. They have the wind screens on the flats. So they're really affected. So I think that's an obstacle. We get around. That's
It's the perfect site if we can control the wind.
Yeah. I, I think that's, yeah, I play all courts like that too. And they just have the wind screen. There's some in, Charlottesville's the same way from down park. It's on a hill, just that. And, you know, they just have them and they really do cut down on the wind altogether almost.
And the help of some
I guess we take that occasion. Trying to co-op with the school board.
It sounded good.
Who's going to maintain it? Who can fix this?
And the coasters, you hear you planning, it's already
It's already done.
We don't have to put Public Works at the North Hawksville Street location if you want. Yes, sir.
In North Pickleball?
Hey, but we lose this something.
Get that piece out of there. All right.
Could I just ask, okay, I will tell you, I did contact the county. I decided, I wasn't sure they put in Ralph Dean baseball fields. Was there some collaboration with money between the county and the town?
It was supposed to be us a little week. That never happened.
Well, I know. But, yeah, anyway, I, I thought, the person that I contacted, one of the supervisors, I thought it was, you know, a great idea maybe to collaborate on this because it not just affects county people, it does affect people in the county. And county uses, county folks use our facility, our county facilities anyway. And
They love to come off and keep well.
You know, I mean, my suggestion was, there's some of the top money that might be used toward that because it certainly does bring people. We had three people last week show up out of town. It was looking to play pickleball. And I found that most tournaments, if you ever get to the level we do tournaments, it's a two-night stay, that's a one-night stay for everyone. Usually this is a two-day event. I don't think any baseball was stayed like that. But it does bring money to them. It really does. Something you need to think about. Maybe, maybe someone should poke the bear up the street and see if they would come up with a money for that.
Hey, y'all had a good crew here.
It was the target.
Okay. Anybody else? Counsel?
Thank you all for giving us the courtesy of sticking around. You didn't have to, but I appreciate it.
Couple things I have. The Chop House, of course, ribbon cutting, grand opening, whatever, next Tuesday from seventeen to ten o'clock. Halloween, of course, is the thirty-first. And you still need help with the costume guy to do, Steve, or have him down? We'll always use more.
I think we have two, but
I'll help, I'll be quick.
Okay, yeah, if, if you will just let Jennifer know and, and, like you said, we can always use more.
And, of course, your Christmas party is December second. Rod has a conflict. Mr. Junior will be in Stanley, so I'm
Hey, come on.
He's deciding what he's, he's going to go see Mr. Junior or do what's
I think I worked it out. I can do both.
Oh, you have?
Listen, fire her.
I was gonna say, she's her plus one.
Okay, seriously, this, Paul had called me fifty weeks ago. He would like to have someone from the town council on the airport commission. And of course, things speak a lot quicker than we thought. So, but he thought it'd be a good idea to have a liaison. You know, he was for many, many years. If anybody would like to volunteer. Are you volunteering?
Yeah, I'll volunteer. How many meetings do you have?
I think you're right.
Sure, I'll be happy. Because I know I asked a couple times to get him to do this. I saw the building get built. I don't know anything about it.
Mr. Mayor, Jason's indicated that you'd need a motion in a second with a vote to appoint Vice Mayor Vickers as the, the town's representative on the airport.
I move the town of Luray to take Ron Vickers as the council liaison to the airport.
Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pickers?
Yes.
I was gonna say, you can't vote him. I'm sorry. Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Towers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, thank you all again for being here. We're about ready to go into a recess. We're going into closed session. We will come back in open session, but I don't know how long that will be. Thank you all for being here.
I just want to let you know, I went ahead and approved
Hey, all right.
We do have a chat group as well, and I'm just going to see if I get you access. You can see how busy that is.
Jason, that was pretty awesome. Musician to musician, you got it.
Marine to marine. We're playing a lot.
Jason, you have a thing for doing a closed session?
I'm ready.
Does anybody need a recess?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's take a short recess.
Yes. No need to post a lot of stuff.
We could do a recess.
They used to do the breakfast, and they did a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know, but they were there.
Now I gotta recuse myself, but mostly architect.
I moved the town council convene and go into a closed meeting for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice as enshrined by section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia. The subject matter is a special use permit application for a childcare facility in 201 East Finch Street.
Segment.
Jason, I need to ask for discussion on this, or is it...
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, discussion? Hearing done.
Mr. Makers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Jason, you wanna handle this one?
...